October 20th at 6:12 PM. Can I have everybody stand to the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're trying to give Mr. Belize a few minutes because he was running late, but we're gonna start up here and hopefully he steps in here fairly soon. Okay, first thing on the agenda is review pest control quotes for the Shepherd Building and possible vote. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you, members of the audience. We have before you tonight is three quotes from three different companies to provide pest control for the Shepherd Municipal Building. There is also quotes in there for the firehouse as well, fire station. One is from American Pest Solutions, the other is from Modern Pest Solutions Services, and the third one is from Bremen Integrated Pest Management. Both have similar quotes in nature. You know, they have an initial startup fee, then they have a monthly fee. Modern Pest is offering the town a discount if you pay in full your first year. These are all monthly based fees with an initial setup cost. American Pest Solutions' initial setup cost is $475 for the Shepherd Building with a monthly servicing fee of $145. Modern Pest has initial setup costs of $736 with a monthly fee of $145. And Bremen Pest Control has a setup cost of $780 with a monthly cost of $170.
And they're all offering the same services?
So, yeah, so to treat, to treat the building accordingly.
And this is just fire station A? We're not worried about B?
Correct. I had a discussion with the chief today regarding the fire station. He had indicated that he feels as though he could handle the situation down there in-house with some, you know, some equipment maybe from the local hardware store. That's moving in his direction. But I would highly recommend that this building be serviced.
So Modern Pest, they're charging us for the equipment?
So, the, all companies are charging for an initial setup cost. There is equipment involved in all three companies.
Okay, they just broke it out, I guess.
Right.
All right.
Modern Pest is, is also a vendor of the police and senior center at the current present state.
And who, oh, the police, yeah.
So, I think Bremen is probably a no because of the high, on the higher end for the same services. Modern Pest just talks about the Shepherd Building, it doesn't say the fire station also.
Yeah, they just have this email, right?
They just had the Shepherd Building.
Right. I think because the chief is gonna keep his, you know, gonna do it in-house. The other companies-
So you're not-
I just, I think it's, those prices to me, I just think they're just kinda way out there. I mean, to be honest, I mean, my budget isn't set up to absorb $1,300 worth of stuff for trapping. I mean, with the electric prices and the gas prices that I'm anticipating for the winter, I can't, I can't take $1,300 out for mice. I mean, I'm gonna do my best to keep up. It's not like we have a major infestation, it's just something that we, we noticed, we trapped a few of them, we looked at it. I didn't, I was, I didn't, I thought the town was kinda taking care of the buildings, I didn't know it, but I know I can't, I can't right now afford $1,300 out of my, my budget for that. I just, and a revolving monthly fee like that, it just seems, to me, it just seems a little too much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna monitor things and kinda do stuff in-house and see if we can't keep up with it. And if it becomes a bigger problem, then, you know, I may look at building that into it for next fiscal year. But right now, I just, I'm afraid of taking a chunk like that.
I just don't want you having a problem with equipment because rodents get into equipment, chew the wiring. Because again, you have very expensive equipment.
We haven't seen anything that would indicate, we had a few of them that got into the bus truck, but there was no damage caused. They got into one of the cab filters. No indication of causing damage to the truck, so that was the only vehicle that we saw any indication they were really in. It was more, you know, they had gotten into the upstairs, into the kitchen area where the food was. So it wasn't, I haven't seen anything that would indicate to me that there's, you know, damage being done to the, to the, to the truck, or to the fleets or anything. You know, they're just, they are just getting in a little bit, and it's more just, you know, ending up in that, you know, that one attached garage. But we haven't caught any in quite a while, so we're, I'm kinda, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna keep an eye on the situation because I just, I can't get into a monthly fee like that. It just, it just, I'm scared with the other prices coming down, what's gonna happen. And I, I don't wanna go over budget just because of something like that right now.
All right, so we can disregard the fire station?
Right.
Okay. So has there been an issue with Modern Pest at all?
I, I haven't been made aware of any issue.
No, they seem to come in as soon as we tell them that we have a problem.
Because they seem like they're the-
Well, their startup is a little higher, but-
The monthly is the same. But the monthly is cheaper.
They do give an option of, looks like almost a little bit over $100 if you pay in full, you get a little bit of a credit. Instead of getting billed monthly, you choose to pay in full, you're gonna get a little bit over $100 of credit.
So for everything, everything with them, for the year, service for the year?
If you choose to pay in full.
$2,214.45 total.
Right.
And American doesn't do that.
No, American is, their initial is a little bit less of a setup cost. It appears, you know, same monthly fee.
So, American Pest also charges $250?
For an on-call, if you need, if you had something really pressing.
Yeah. Do we have any idea, well, what do you know?
Modern has never charged us when we've called them.
Okay, that's a good sound.
They're already servicing our buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
We definitely need them because we all seen-
Yes.
The rodents.
Yeah.
Can't deny it. We have a group of people chasing a mouse through an office. So, yeah, we opened up a door, turned the lights on, and a rodent was running across one of the vents.
The radiator.
None of us want ink?
No.
No, well.
I've seen too many mice in my life that I don't care anymore.
Unfortunately, they seem to be a problem for everybody right now. Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I would recommend Modern Pest, I guess.
I think Modern's a good idea, too. Do you have anything?
We'll start with a joke. Can we paint by the mice?
I don't know, it might cost us more.
Well, it'd be expensive at the beginning, then our costs would go down.
Well, you hope.
Right.
I agree on the vendor. I just would like to do some additional suggestions, like we can have memos saying, don't leave food on the offices, try to be green, because mice don't come in here just because they find food.
Yeah.
And they wanna get warm.
Yeah, once it starts getting cold out.
Yeah, they're gonna try to look for it.
I know driving down the roads, if you start driving down the roads and it's getting nighttime, you get your lights on and it crisscrossing all over the roads and stuff, and it's like they're everywhere. I've never seen them this bad.
Well, there's been some reports, you know, throughout the state that there's been an uptick in these cases.
Didn't it have to do with extra acorns or something?
Is that what it is?
That's what I was told, because we have an issue with the water department. But same thing, when we found out how much it was gonna cost, I salute him because that's what we did. We're actually right next to you, is that we seem to have more mice than usual.
I haven't sent them to you guys.
But we had someone come in and give us an estimate, and we decided to, we would just handle it ourselves. It just, it just, you know, affects the budget too much.
Wait, what? Karen said the other day, bring your cat up to work. I think it's a good idea.
I'm afraid my cat might attack people, so.
I have to say, I finally got a cat, Tammy brought, and that thing's a mouser. That thing, every single day, he's bringing home little, little trophies and leaving them on the porch or in the front yard for us, so.
Let them bring them in live, though.
No, no, he's never done that.
No.
He keeps them outside.
Yeah, our cat does the same thing.
So, do you wanna do Modern? Yeah, I say if we could save $100 and pay for the year, because it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. You gotta bait them for a while and service them. Modern seems to be responsive to everything else. And with all the electronics and everything else in the building and all that stuff, I just don't want any, you know, the price of having to replace a new server because they got into the servers and chewed on that or anything else, or started a fire, so, which I did find in my house, some mice were chewing on some wiring in my house, and I had to fix that. But they do do it, so. If you wanna make a motion?
All right.
And we'll pay for the, you good with paying for the year?
Yeah, so would you include in the motion that I have authorization to sign, because they don't want me to sign a contract?
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to use Modern Pest for pest control at the Shepherd Building and that we authorize Jim to sign a contract.
For this amount?
Services.
For the amount.
For $2,214.45 plus the startup cost?
No, that, that's inclusive, everything.
That's everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because 11 months of service is $15.95, and then you add the $7.36, so that's-
Okay.
That's $184, everyone.
Well, the startup fee and the equipment.
No, I'm fine. I second that.
Okay, so we got a second? All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Vedic Belize, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Let's get rid of those rodents.
Okay.
Karen wants a savory chocolate.
Hey, I have it in Tupperware now, I'm okay.
Yeah, even chocolate laying around on the offices would be, you know, a good-
I have it in Tupperware.
Okay, review and possible vote on schedule fees for liquor licenses and Class 1, 2, and 3 licenses. Okay. So we're looking at what we have now, correct? Our current fees? Okay, and then Barry's and Brookfield and Weir's fees.
Empty boxes means we don't have it?
The empty boxes means we do not charge, something different than like on the package store, wine and malt, we don't, we just charge the 500 or we don't charge at all. Or we don't have any, basically, we don't have any.
What do you mean, we don't have any?
We don't have any package stores that just do wine and beer.
Yeah, okay, all right. And what's Class 1, 2, 3?
That's the vehicle classes, the ones, we don't have any 2s, we only have 1s and 3s like the, we hold a bunch of cars, what is that called?
Junkyard.
Yeah, like junkyard, selling of cars.
Oh, I see.
So those are the vehicles classes.
I think a Class 1 is a new car dealership, a Class 2 is a used car dealership, and a Class 3 would be like a junkyard.
Yeah.
So do you wanna go down each one?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, this just seems kinda arbitrary, like these other towns, like what?
Well, some of them are charging.
It just seems like a- Just seems like a mishmash of amounts.
Yeah.
Is there any rhyme or reason to?
No.
Okay.
They're just comparable to showing that they charge more than us. So we're charging five hundred for all alcoholic beverages, where Barry's nine hundred, Brookfield's nine hundred, and Weir is, you know, one thousand two hundred and fifteen.
Boston is three, thirty-hundred, thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't got Boston prices here. And then Barry charges for wine and malt, they charge two seventy, which, I don't know where they came up with that number. And then Weir charges five fifty, which would almost be like half the price.
Yeah, so why don't we make that two fifty for us?
But if we have a criteria, match the next one.
What?
Well, match the next, the next town in town. Be higher up.
That would be two seventy?
If we went in line with everybody else, they're nine hundred, which is the average. So if we went to the all alcoholic beverages, we went to nine hundred. Then that would just match the other towns, what they're charging. We're not gonna charge, charging over a thousand dollars for Weir. Yeah, I think that's a little too much.
I guess I.
And that's for more restaurants, we only have, the two considered restaurants in town is actually, they're both pubs. It's the Countryside and it's Galinda's, we don't actually have a restaurant in town that has all alcohol.
And do they pay this per year? I mean, I don't know, I, it's not like there's huge business in Warren, too, I mean, I'd be happy at keeping it at five hundred.
We'd keep it at five hundred, too.
Yeah, just so we're.
I don't wanna drive all business either.
No, and it's such a small fee, I, you know, I don't know. Another five hundred dollars or four hundred in the coffers is not really anything.
And then we don't have any for the other items.
Yeah, but I think we should send them out, right?
Yeah.
You know?
Just in case we get somebody that's interested in it.
So if we stay, if we stay five hundred for the, you know, restaurant, all alcoholic beverages, and then we just do wine and malt, why don't we just do two fifty?
Yeah, that sounds good.
So two fifty for that. And then package store, wine and malt.
Two fifty there.
Well, they have pack, they have five hundred for the all alcohol, so let's just do two fifty, it's just.
Yeah.
Half of that, then.
What is?
General on-premise alcohol.
What does that mean, and how's that different from a restaurant?
Restaurants are free, neither one doesn't, but we don't have any of those. We don't have any, just bars. We have clubs, but we don't have any bars.
So let's just say, because it's all alcohol, just take with five hundred.
Yeah, I agree.
Five hundred.
And two fifty.
And then two fifty for wine and malt.
Yeah.
And then food serving. Yeah, we do twenty-five dollars. Barry's twenty-five, Brookfield's fifty, and Weir's fifty.
That seems fine to me, twenty-five.
You bid twenty-five?
Yeah.
Weekend entertainment, Weir's seventy-five, Barry's fifty, Brookfield's one fifty, Weir is a hundred.
So weekday entertainment, what would that be, like the?
Like if you have a band or a comedian coming or something like that.
Okay.
Say keep it?
Yeah, if we're charging seventy-five, our mouths will keep it.
So coin-operated amusement devices, each we charge twenty dollars. Same with Barry. Brookfield is forty, Weir's sixty dollars per device. Somebody using like an arcade game or something, right?
Yeah, they, Countryside, Countryside has five in their possession.
Okay, I say we just leave it like that.
Yeah.
I don't see that they're making big money on them. Sunday entertainment town fee, Weir's seventy-five, Barry's twenty-five, Brookfield's one fifty, and then a hundred for Weir. Leave it?
Leave it.
One-day license for all alcohol, Barry's a hundred, nothing for Brookfield, and Weir's fifty. We don't have anything, so I would say let's do fifty.
And then do twenty-five for wine and malt, right?
Yeah.
Cut it in half, okay.
You good with that, Derek?
Yes, so far.
Okay. And holders license. So we don't have anything. Have we been charging for it? Don't we have?
We have a B and B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Barry's twenty-five, Brookfield's nothing, Weir's fifty. Say twenty-five?
Yeah.
You gotta charge something for processing fees and stuff and all the administrative. Okay, the Class One is a hundred dollars for One, Two, and Three in Warren. Barry, it's one twenty-five for all of them, Brookfield, it's a hundred for each of them, and Weir's two hundred for each of them.
I say just keep it, right?
Yeah.
We're already charging a hundred.
I'd say leave it, too.
Okay.
Okay. So our fees.
Are you good with those?
Can I make a comment about the ones with liquor?
Yeah.
If we're being nice with them, wouldn't it be nice if we could have more licenses for our new business? Because.
Actually, I was informed incorrectly by the person that I took their place. They can, we can actually have up to ten restaurants or clubs in town with all alcohol.
Because I know one restaurant has been begging for a year trying to get that license.
And I kept telling him that, no, 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 and then this year I actually called them and didn't go off of what somebody else told me, and they said yes.
Okay. Help them.
Yeah.
So let them know.
Yeah, okay.
They have to go through A, B, C, C, fill out all the forms, and then come to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they're doing, they're trying, they're not doing well, they're reducing their hours, so.
Or maybe this will help them.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So we do a motion on those changes? Do I have to read off all the changes?
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the license fees as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Eddie Billy's, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right, next thing on the agenda is review draft performance evaluations for professional staff. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, our last meeting, I presented a draft for you guys to review. Since our last meeting, I had a great conversation with Selectman Lees, and he had put together a, kind of a, a really dramatic, a nice way of evaluating, step two in all the breakdowns of job-related experiences, communication, customer service, quality of work and productivity, initiatives and creativity and problem solving, cooperation, teamwork, leadership, dependability, attendance, supervisory, staff development. He took all those categories and created a document that is electronic, that you can, similar to the discussion that I had with Selectman Aihacker, with, you know, a rating system. And so you would, you know, do one to five on each of the criteria within the Section Two of the evaluation. It would be, it would be something that you can quantify into tables and graphs, such as the examples provided to you in your packets tonight. It would still allow for the employee to sit down and write down some of their achievements and goals, and what they wanted to focus in on, on their year, kind of give them a, an opportunity to reflect and assess themselves in a self-evaluation process, and then allows for input from either people that work on a board, that supervise an employee, or maybe it's a member of the Board of Selectmen, and they wanted to include everybody in the process of the evaluation, so they could send out the evaluation electronically and have each member respond. In that way, you're kind of, you know, gauging on a one-to-five basis, you know, as opposed to just directly saying, you know, did not meet this requirement, or having a lower score on, on one thing. So it's kind of like a scaled approach, more or less. It is, it is an option, you know, to do that. That's kind of where we had the discussion from last week to this week. But I don't think it's entirely complete as of yet, so it's just kind of giving you an update as to what had transpired between last week and this week.
Okay, did we get any feedback from the, the?
Departments?
Department heads?
I have not, I did send it out last week to everybody, I haven't received it yet. But it is still busy time of the, you know, year with.
The budget.
Budget and special town meetings, so let them digest it for another week or so, and, you know, maybe we can, you know, revisit this, you know, as we can, you know, progress.
Maybe just send a reminder.
Yeah.
You know, like on Tuesday next week or something.
Okay.
Very good. Cool.
Table it for two weeks?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I really wanna see the feedback from department heads and see what they're saying, maybe they have something, some suggestions, and, you know, I would send this out as an option, too, to let them know, hey, is another option available, let us know what you think. Then maybe we can do like a, say a department head meeting.
Yeah.
And sit down and really kind of hash down these things. Yes, sir.
So it, I just took the document and made it digital, so if, you know, people can do it on their phone or on their computer.
See, it looks better there than what it looks here. Is there a way you can send that?
Oh, yeah. Want me to send it to you?
Yes, it's just, it's a web?
Yeah, it's a website. So basically, it's a good thing that we wait for the input from the other head departments, because once we have that, you know, like a final draft that we were talking about, now we can do this format, online format. And the idea is to take a lot, a lot of the painful process of going through each evaluation and trying to read, and, you know, coming, doing the math, who's good. This allows us to get all the input, all the information, and will give us straight statistics, will give us a spreadsheet. Did you get the chance to see the spreadsheet?
Yes, yeah.
So it just takes everything right there and makes it a lot much easier for the administrator and for the users, you know, and the evaluators, because it just.
Yeah, we wanna make it easy for the employee and the department heads, because, again, you wanna be fair to the employees, but you also don't wanna bog down a department head with doing these, and then it becomes too cumbersome.
So the program pick up your email, so you know who is responding to. And then it doesn't matter if you have one person in charge of it, or you're having five or ten evaluating the same person. So the way I set it up, each file, it's a person. So we start, this is the second part, like Jim said, but the first part is have the evaluator or the employee to fill in the first part, their self-evaluation, and you get that one, too, same as this. And then something simple here, where they read a question and they just go, you know, answering. So it actually helps both sides, you to evaluate, because it's much faster, you know, going through what you need to evaluate. But also, it tabulates the information in a very easy way, where it's just by looking at it. The samples over there are just like five or ten tons, I did the same, you know, went through the data evaluation quickly, just to have some graphics and numbers. But once you start putting, you know, for example, planning board is gonna evaluate secretary, so we have five members, and the five members, he, with just a glance, will be able to see, you know, where she's at. So for example, if one person doesn't like much that employee, and you can see a flag, kind of like thing where, oh, why does he doesn't like this person? So he can go directly and tap to him, what's the issue with this person? Instead of him trying to get all, you know, twenty-five pieces of paper, reading through, trying to clap, see, it's too much work. This will make his life much easier.
Okay. Do you have any questions? No, I was just gonna say, like Jim had mentioned, my thought was to take these checked items and rate those.
That's what it is.
That's what I did, yeah.
And then it would turn in, it would automatically calculate this one.
That's what it is.
Yeah, okay, so that's what.
Yeah, each, each of those items, you go and pick one and say, oh, she's really.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see what you did, yeah.
So I went one step ahead.
It does exactly what you were talking about.
Okay, good, good. Okay, I thought, I thought, 'cause you just have one category on there, is what you did, okay.
So he took all of the categories on there, on the, on the map, and compiled them onto the web.
Okay. Cool.
So I think, you know, I think they can still look at the crux of the draft, because it's the same information, it's the same questions. And, you know, we can get their feedback from the departments and the boards, you know, in a couple of weeks, and see where, you know, where we are.
Yeah. Good.
Very good. All right, do you have any other questions?
No, sir.
No.
Do you have anything else, please, Lees?
I think we're in good shape, you know, you're gonna get your feedback, your draft is gonna change, it's gonna evolve. We're just gonna pay attention to, sometimes don't leave open questions with an open text, because it's, then you will have to go and try to digest all this information. But if we do like, for example, is Board of Selectmen Eddie Billy's good-looking, yes, no, maybe? And then, you know, you start getting data, instead of like, oh, yeah, I really like him. And he has to translate that into a.
Score.
Score.
Evaluation, yeah.
So by doing this, by controlling, you know, the answer, the question and the answer, he will get his data and a real score of the person who's been evaluated. I think it's a pretty cool thing, I think, I do this all the time, and it's, it's great, 'cause it saves paper, saves time a lot. Because you go through the original draft, you know, and each one, there's a big part of, you know, a comment. And some people write living a little, like me, or some other people write a lot, and, but then you have to go through all, you know, there are twenty employees times, you know, three or four people evaluated, it's a lot of data. And we wanna have Jim not, we don't want him to spend forty hours on this.
Well, I don't think it's on him to do every employee's evaluation, it's on the department heads to do the evaluation. We did, the department heads just gotta justify why they're giving them that score. You know, because I just don't want somebody to turn around and say, well, yeah, my employees are a five, a five, a five, five, outstanding. Okay, I understand you feel that way, but why are they a five? Why are they outstanding across the board? What, what makes them outstanding versus anybody else?
Yeah.
And I think, like, if you have a comment section in there, you can require, hey, if you're gonna go above, if you're gonna go above a three, if you're gonna go to a four, you need to.
Justify it.
Justify why you're going to a four. And if you go into a five, why do you need? Because again, we're, we're gonna be giving, we could potentially be giving step increases for outstanding performance. And we just don't want every single employee to come forward as outstanding because.
And, and that's okay.
The reality is, well, it's not that way.
I can show that comments are there, but what I'm saying with, with all the information, when you see on the graphs side like 100% of everything, immediately raises a flag and Jim says, oh, let me ask him why, you know, is he so good? Or somebody who's getting, you know, all bad things, he can.
Yeah, I think.
Literally graphically just look at it and say, oh, there's something wrong over here. Let's try to look at it.
Yeah, ones and twos should have a comment too.
Everything there.
If you're doing below, if you're doing below.
Yeah, why they're getting dinged.
Why are you?
What is, what is.
Show something every day or?
That's even more important maybe than the four and fives, right?
Well, then you can do corrective action and say, hey, you know, something, you, your last performance evaluation, this was noted and you, you come in every single day late and you leave early. You, you, you get 30 minutes for lunch, but you've been taking an hour and 45 minutes lunch. You know, a way of addressing that.
Yeah, and this is just to respond to your request last week about doing this digital and it be, give Jim.
Definitely gotta be digital somehow because having to do paper and all the paper shuffling, it just.
And this one you can do it on the phone or on the computer. And, you know, it's, it's, it's live and it's, say, a time saver and paper saver, so it's no question to ask.
So I would just say, put it out, department heads, see if, see what they think.
Okay.
We'll give them different options. And again, at some point, we're, we're gonna have to have like a, a department head meeting and, and go over all this stuff and say, hey, you know, this is affects them and their employees as much as it does us as the board, so.
Yeah, and Jim will have a pretty much a lot of control because every time somebody fills a form, he gets an notification. So he can, you know, it's accountable to see, oh, I don't have X, Y, and Z. Send an email, call her, hey, you're, I need you to.
Yeah, you guys got four employees over there and I ain't got any of your emails yet. What's going on?
Right, right, right.
So. Yeah. All right, very good. Anybody have any questions about it? All right. Work in progress and we'll table it for two more weeks.
Got it.
And further discussion. Okay. Review blank note cards.
No, we.
Why, what, what's going on with?
No, we did review and accept warrant.
The warrants are first.
Okay, number four. Sorry about that. So, yeah, we're on review and accept warrants for the special town meeting.
So two didn't get voted on? Are they just not in the purview of the 13 and 14?
13 and 14 were, were passed, so the, the finance committee met on this Tuesday. They voted on every article except for 13 and 14 in the last article, which didn't really pertain to any finances. And the reason why they, they passed on 13 and 14, they wanted me to just check with town council on, you know, future handling of out of district students and, and how they are going to be calculated. I, I did call Desi, I had a lengthy conversation with Desi. You know, with the school education representatives out of Boston. And, and they, they, they said that it's unfortunate, but the, the town is, is responsible. The town will get billed every year that the student attends. The town is, will also capture a, a small amount of, of chapter 70 monies to offset some of the transportation costs associated with the out of district student. So they will, they will make a decision or a formal recommendation, I anticipate next week. But they just want passed on it. All the other ones, they had a action, were taken. These, this is a draft. This is based upon the requests that I have received from departments. Some requests were not the departments, just ones that I had looked at that could be potential shortfalls in the budget and instead of trying to do a line item transfer in the spring, trying to address the situation now.
Does 14 include off-hours sports?
No.
Yeah, okay. Just to.
Yeah, we shut that one down.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I would bring your attention to Article Six in Article Seven. It's a recommendation that I'm making to the board that they transfer from free cash to 25 to stabilization. The last time the town has transferred money to stabilization was in 2009. So it has been some time. I think that's, for, for what stabilization is, it's like a savings account for the town. The current, the current value in the account is $1,391,896. That will put the town, if that was to pass, that would put the town into the 15% range, which is recommended by the Department of Revenue to have in stabilization at any given time. This will also show to the bond rating agencies and to the bond markets that the town is serious and is being financially responsible and will also help to improve our bond rating and our bond capacity in the future, in my view. This will help for future capital projects as the town wants to move forward on. In Article Seven, the town has in the past, as of recent, has made a deposit into capital stabilization. I, I'm recommending $125,000 to be put into capital stabilization. There's currently $383,000 in capital stabilization as of June 30th. And this will continue to put us over the half a million dollar mark into capital stabilization. Again, will show that we're, we're, we're trying to address capital projects by, you know, putting money away in case there is a, a significant project that should arise.
So what do we have in there? Capital stabilization now?
As of June 30th, $383,398.
And what would that pay for?
So a capital project. So it's a, it would be, you know, if there was a, God forbid, there was a big water main or, or sewer line of some sort that, that the town needed to address. If there was a significant issue with the building, you know.
A new roof on this.
A new roof or something, you know. If there had to be significant issue there, if, you know, if there was a need for a, a capital investment in a, in a vehicle of some sort, you know, a big, you know, truck or something that, you know, something catastrophic happened to, you know, our fire truck or police truck, or, or police vehicle, you know, that, that would be something that, you know, would require a two-thirds majority of vote at town meeting to get out of there.
Okay.
So. The $1,030.50 for the senior center?
Uh, I'm sorry.
To fix the conviction oven?
Yeah.
Article 15.
Article 15, okay. So that was a, a request by the department head to have that article put on. She's a.
Isn't there a way where you just pay for it and get it fixed?
She did, she got it fixed. It's, it's, it's done. She just took it out of her expense account, so she wants to.
Replenish it.
Replenish it.
Okay.
So she do, wasn't anticipating that, that expense this year. So this would replenish it and, and, you know, make her whole for her, her budgetary expenses.
Okay. So can I ask, you've kind of, you've reformatted like the wording on these compared to previous meetings, right?
Right.
So you've got what the motion is and then you've just got an explanation.
I'm sorry, uh, on which one?
Well, any of these.
Okay, yeah.
Generically, you have what the action is and then you explain why we're doing it?
Uh, if, if the motion didn't, if the motion didn't, is not clear enough, yeah.
Okay. So I was just wondering, the phrase, or take any action relative thereto, shouldn't that go at the end of the first part, which is the motion or the action?
It's, it's discretionary, it could be, could be, you know. These, these haven't been reviewed by town council as of yet. You know, they may change it, they may change it around.
So I, just like number 11.
Number 11, okay.
This was originally voted at the special town meeting on January 17, 2019, Article Three, or take any action relative thereto.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's why I think it would go on the first part of it.
Okay.
Just because that second part, in a way, has nothing to, it's kind of, you could remove it and the article should still stand. It's just an explanation of what was going on.
Mm-hmm.
But that, or take any action relative thereto, keeps us out of a box that we wouldn't want to get into.
Right.
So that's why, you know, I would think you'd put it with.
Say bond tan, right?
But, yeah.
Control expense or take any action thereto.
Yeah, I think that phrase needs to go after the first sentence, at the end of the first sentence.
At the end of the first, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got that, Jim.
Okay.
And same with nine also.
Well, across the board, it should be, like all of these, unless for some reason they, well, see number 12, there's no explanation, right? So that's fine. And same with 13, 'cause it's one motion.
Right.
You don't really have an explanation there. I guess you don't need one, right?
It's more clear, you know, in the motion.
Okay, I'll change all those.
Now, I will have to bring your attention to Article 20. That is for a, the lease for the police radio and fire infrastructure project. Those leases, I'm anticipating that those leases are gonna be greater than, than the threshold that you guys can approve, so that we'll have to go to town meeting. So I will have to have all those leases probably broken down into an article. So I've made Jeff Blake aware of that. I've gotten one lease from Adam. I'm, I'm waiting on two more leases, which should be coming relatively soon. As soon as I get those, I will forward them over to Jeff as well. And then we'll have to probably break those individual leases out, so there will have to be additional articles. It'll be, the, the cost will still be the same, the $41,000, but it will, they'll have to be broken out individually because there's three different companies you're gonna be entering into leases with.
So speaking of that, with the lease on these towers, have we looked into seeing if we, when they put the towers up, when it went through the planning process? If there were any conditions allowing for police to have space, police and fire to have space on these for free?
I, I did look at the, the planning board documentation on that and the bylaws from town and there is no language in there that I can find.
That has anything to do with police and fire being exempt or allowed on there for free of charge. There was something that just never made it into the.
On all three of them?
Yeah. Yeah, those, those, all those towers are existing. You know, the only one that would have possibly have changed would have been the newest one by the water tank on South Bidge Road, but that one is useless to us because it's so low. It, it's, the three towers that we're entering, we're, you know, hoping to enter into a lease with are the three towers that were identified by the engineering study that would be the only ones that would work for this project.
Okay.
Do other towns do that?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Put in the bylaws.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
It's something that, you know, we, we should definitely fix.
So the ATM? I was speaking as planning board now.
You're wearing gold hats.
Yeah.
No, but it's definitely something we should be writing inside of any of the proposals that are there, is making sure that you guys have space on these towers. No charge to the town.
I don't have the exact verbiage in front of me, but it does state something that, that police and fire would be able to utilize the towers if there was available sta- space. It does not say that there's any exemption for payment or anything like that. It just simply says that they can use them if there's room and there's a need to use them. It just, it doesn't have any kind of dollar figures attached to it. So, you know, unfortunately, that, you know, we, we are gonna have to have a, a dollar about each, each tower. And each one of them is going to be different.
Okay.
So number 17, that wasn't part of ARPA money?
Number 17? No, that's the, that's redirected.
Original dispatch, never mind.
Uh, 25, why is that coming from the town accountant? Shouldn't that be coming from Board of Health because it's a landfill? They manage the landfills, right?
Yeah, um, she submitted it to me, so, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's an accounting of the landfill, so. And there may not even be a need for that. It, it's my understanding that when DOR was here, they had an issue with trying to find out when the town entered into an enterprise fund with the landfill. They didn't have a record of it, a recording of it. And they're trying to, seeing if there was ever a, you know, a vote taken by the town to, to create a enterprise fund at the landfill. So, you know, if there was no vote taken, then ceasing the enterprise fund at the landfill would be, in my view, a mu point, but, you know.
Yeah, last, in our annual, the assistant town accountant tried to do that again and Legal said it doesn't need to be on there. There's no reason to do it.
Yeah.
So we took it back off, so.
So it's back on, but.
I mean, unless, unless Legal, it can verify that there's no land, you know, there's no enterprise fund there.
But they had one, right?
Well, the, the town has always, has always used it as an enterprise fund, but they, they don't have a record of it as ever being adopted into an enterprise fund. And that would have to be done at a, at a town meeting.
So it makes sense to, to, to do, do a vote to cease it? If it was established policy, even if it didn't.
Right.
It wasn't a vote. It's been going on.
Right. So, I mean, we can see what, what town council says.
Yeah. And I'd definitely run it past the Board of Health on.
So all that means is then.
It's just the, just the accounting aspect of the funds.
Right, so all the fees from the landfill just go into the general fund and then the expenses for the landfill come out of the general fund, right? As opposed to the enterprise fund.
Where it's self-sufficient.
Right, well. Right, well.
Supposedly.
Right, so it'd be like the sewer. If we got rid of sewer, then it would be the user fees come into the Town of Warren-
Right.
-general fund.
It's more of an accounting, uh, aspect of the fund, but now, uh, the landfill is, is now a transfer station, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the user fees probably go right to Solid Waste Solutions.
Right, correct.
'Cause we're, we set up a contract with them, right?
Right.
They probably pay us a fee, or I don't know how that works, but, yeah.
But you would have to do this, um, if you did this, uh, as it says in here, effective fiscal year twenty-four, it couldn't take effect until, 'cause Mass General Law requires a year to be open until, you can't do it mid-year, mid-fiscal year, so that's why, if you, if you were to do it, you'd have to do it now for next fiscal year.
Right, for July first.
Okay. So we can see what town council says. Article thirty was not supported by FinCom. Um, they felt as though that, um, it, you know, if, um, if the department wants to do this, they should specify as to what specific equipment, um, you know, they were looking to purchase.
Okay, can we go back to twenty-six and twenty-seven?
Sure.
Isn't that the same thing?
So twenty-six and twenty-seven?
Twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of three thousand from the landfill, um, from landfill, remove vegetation, stabilize banking, to operations, to take any action relative to. Twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer sixteen thousand four hundred from the landfill, remove vegetation and stabilize banking to monitoring wells. Okay, to monitoring wells, right. So yeah.
So ones to operation and ones to monitoring wells.
Okay, alright.
Now, the fifteen thousand is for PBAS, that's done for the Board of Health, and, um, that, that PBAS testing is very, very expensive.
Hi, John.
You're talking about Article twenty-seven?
Yes, the sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Don, just introduce yourself, so everybody knows who you are.
This is Don McAlister, Chair of Board of Health.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're just trying to understand what the articles are written as. When I was reading through it, I'm like, wait a second, isn't this the same thing? Why don't we just add it together? Give it all to one thing, one fun, eliminate that article and do it one, one sum. Okay.
So Article thirty-one, we have to accept, we have to pass this resolution at a town meeting, huh?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
This is the exact verbiage that I received from the state that they're requiring that this be passed as.
Oh, and so this turns it into an official park, as well as other things, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions, do you?
Yeah, I mean-
Do we have any more that's coming up, or is this it?
This should be it, except for the breakout of that article for the radio infrastructure project. I, I don't anticipate anything else. And all the articles, you know, we had requested them to be in last Friday, so.
Snooze your blues.
You got that right.
Now, there are, there are two articles on here dealing with animal control.
Correct.
They are not going towards payroll.
Correct, they're not going towards payroll.
They're just budget.
Correct, the budgetary matters.
So I just want to make sure.
Expense account matters.
If it was payroll, I'd have to recuse myself.
It's not payroll.
Okay. Alright.
Now, the question that I have for the board is normally we put lump everybody together, so you don't have to stand up, sit down, stand up, sit down. Do you want me to go ahead and do that? Because as, and then usually we put the select board at the end. Do you want me to put the select board at the beginning or the end, or is there any particular way that you want this done?
Is order of the articles? Yeah, typically put them in as far as departments.
Correct. Do you want select board last?
Town administrator's selection.
Honestly, you have most of the selection all in the beginning, so you might as well just leave it like that, right?
Yeah.
Then I'll move the other ones that aren't.
Well, it can be in there. Maybe put town administrator next, and then however it falls after that, right?
So I better go order.
Sure.
Well, just, you know, I, I, I'm not familiar, but, you know, sometimes they put stuff at the beginning and the end for some reason.
Oh, just lumping it in as departments.
Okay.
So throw it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll do that.
Yeah, because you're right, so people don't have to keep on standing up and going back and.
The only thing is thirty-one, keep thirty-one at the end.
Yeah.
Because you gotta take that whole page for it, so.
Well, this is, this goes on legal, so it changes.
Yeah, but it's still like the-
But the thirty-one still is towards the very end, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that last.
Okay.
Doesn't that look good? And FinCom's good with everything, except for the ones we discussed.
Right. Like I said, they're, they're, they're anticipating meeting next week, clean up anything, uh, you know, once I hear back from legal on, on the out-of-district students, um, and just, uh, you know, just a general cleanup, but, uh, I don't, I don't anticipate that meeting lasting very long. They did, um, indicate to me that they wanted to know what time the board would like to meet on the special town meeting prior to with town council.
Typically meet an hour before.
An hour before? Okay, alright.
Yeah, because we go over eight, everything, just to make sure, um.
So we're meeting at five?
We separate, yeah, we separate articles, we make sure, you know, we divide up the articles between us, so not one person's just stuck reading all of them.
Oh, yeah, go through stuff with a moderator.
Speaking of that.
Yeah.
We have a moderator.
Yes, Vinnie.
Oh, we do?
He'll be there.
You gonna do it again this year?
Well, he'll be there until, uh, from what I understand, until May.
Okay.
He'll be there, yeah.
Okay, we just want to make sure, because at the last annual, he said he's done.
I don't think he's going to run again. I think he's finishing out his term. I think his term ends this, this year.
Can we definitely make sure, because?
No, I already know that he is for the special town meeting. He is in town. He gets back from a vacation on Saturday night. He will be here for the town meeting.
Okay.
But then the, the annual, he is not.
No.
Right.
Okay, so.
Well, I think that's just whoever runs, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He's not going to run again, I don't, from my understanding.
Right. Yeah, he's, he's retired.
So elected, it's not appointed?
Elected.
So we are good to go.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to accept the warrants?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Benny Bevins, aye.
David DeFrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, now onto five. Blank note cards.
I was asked to get prices on note cards that didn't have anything inside of them, but it had the town seal on the front of it.
For what?
For when, apparently it came up from Rich to, for Jim to send out a note, a thank you note to the people that did the bridge.
Well, and, and like vendors too.
That was, that was just an example, and so they asked me to reach out to several people. I reached out to three different people. Um, copycat was at least expensive, and so I asked them to send me a draft, and that's what I'm presenting to you today, is the front of the card will have the town seal on it. The inside will be blank, and the envelopes will have the return address on it.
Okay. So we're using these to just handwrite out a note?
Yes.
Yeah.
And send to people?
Variety of people that we would like to send out to. Could be a thank you note to one of the employees that you guys have decided to send it out to. It could be a thank you-
Constituent?
Yep.
Could be very general, you know, if you wanted to write a note to a constituent, if you, you know, wanted to write, you know, a get well card, if you wanted to, uh, you know, thank a vendor, if you wanted to thank a, you know, a local official, yeah, I mean, it's just a generic. It'll be on card stock. There'll be professionally printed cards that you can use at your discretion, you know, to address any, anything that you may have. Kept it very general in nature, so that you can use them all year round.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I was actually thinking, go to like Ocean State Job Lot and get in a box of-
But these are nice more professional.
Yeah, but this is probably a better idea. I just-
I, I went through this in the office, and I end up doing postcards at Walmart, look like a photo, and they come with an envelope and everything, and you just do, you know, order twenty or fifty at a time.
Yeah, but I don't think we can order from Walmart unless we pay for it and then get reimbursed.
Do me, I, I mean, I'm okay with any way.
Oh, what are you thinking? Hundred and sixty-five dollars for five hundred of them, ninety-five dollars for a box of envelopes.
Two hundred and sixty dollars.
So two hundred and sixty dollars for note cards.
Yeah.
What are you thinking?
Well, I think it's, it is a good idea to thank people and to keep in touch with people, so even like, you know, like CMRPC, like even sending something to the pest guys, you know, around the holidays, you know, just, it's like a goodwill gesture. Um, I have a, a friend of mine, is the head of the DPW in Hanover, Mass, and he says it's critical that you, like, stay in contact with the engineering, like the DOT guys that are in your district, um, because they decide what projects come up and what they're going to do next, and.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just us. This is available to-
I think any department could.
Any department. So, I mean, if, if I had a need to write a thank you card, or if Karen had a need, or if, you know, Dawn or, um, the chief had a need, I mean, it's a, it's a-
Okay, so it's not strictly just-
No, anybody, you know, they could come see Karen and, and grab one, you know.
Okay.
So even like, send one to Deborah Bevan, right, EDA, you know, something like that, just thank you for the opportunity kind of thing.
Please provide more money.
Yeah.
She has an envelope with the return. Please send a check.
As soon as possible.
Alright, yeah, I'm good. That makes more sense, as long as all the departments see.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it is important to be able to recognize people and say thank you for them and, for their efforts. We've had a lot of amazing support throughout all the communities for us, especially with, you know, doing the master plan and the EDA and everything. It was amazing to see all the communities come forward and help us out.
Yeah.
Give us letters of support.
Well, even for the chief to send out the thank you for letting us borrow the engine.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions, sir?
Can we get a sample?
This is the sample, I guess.
This is your sample.
Oh, looks too cheap.
Fold, fold it in half and there you go.
Is it going to have these holes in it? I don't understand.
That's okay, you're not the only one that came up and said, what are you talking about here, Karen? I said, I don't know how to explain it.
It would be nice if it was like a wet seal.
Raised?
Embroid, embroiled, whatever it is.
Embossed.
Embossed, yeah.
Enough.
Well, if we really use them, right, if we load through the five hundred, then.
The way I see it, we could just buy one of those stampers and Karen could sit there and just stamp them off.
I wanted to build my muscles.
Yes, sir.
So, try to add, resident, we do have a stamper, town clerk's office.
Yes. There we go.
Not going to happen.
She won't lend out her stamper?
Is it part of our physical fitness program we have here?
Yeah, her stamper is, um,
Yeah, she gets a-
It's mechanical.
Oh, yeah.
Is it five hundred a minimum?
Um, no. That's just what I asked for, because that's what I was asked to ask for.
I'm sure you could do two fifty. It's going to maybe save you ten bucks.
Yeah.
It's a setup charge and everything.
It only saves ten bucks.
No, yeah. I mean, it, they're, they're running a, a, it's a black and white. I'm sure it's, it's not going to be that much in savings.
Yeah.
Maybe twenty dollars in savings, maybe.
Well, usually when I send out, you know, five hundred.
But if all the other departments are using them, you know, they, you can give them a, a little sum of them.
You know.
Give them a hundred cards, whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense. So do a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can take care of that, yeah, that's no problem, there's no-
We're in a general agreement, right?
Yeah, we're in agreement. So review and possible vote for acceptance of the bid for the server move. Alright, Northeast IT. So they want to do it for a total cost of four thousand eighteen dollars. Okay, and this is so we can move the server from downstairs in a, from an area that's not climate controlled, um, to upstairs, um, where it's air-conditioned and it prolongs the life of our servers. Um, right now, it's in, gets very, very hot in that, that room downstairs, um, which my general understanding for servers is very bad.
Yes.
To have it hot down there. Um, it wears on the life of the, our server. Um, so this will actually move it up to an area where it can be better, climate-controlled. We cannot put anything in that room downstairs because of the location of the room and the design of the room. Um, there's no way of putting air conditioning in the room, so the only way we can do it is to move it up to an area that can be air-conditioned.
So it'd probably be more than four grand to put air conditioning in.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
You can't, because there's no outside wall.
Because you have to have like a central air or something like that in there, because you can't put a, a wall unit or a standing unit.
Yeah.
Because you'd have to have a drain for condensation, and, yeah, we don't have that in there.
Right.
So it'd cost a lot more money to try to put something in there.
Plus that room is fire-safe.
Yeah.
So.
You wouldn't want a hole in the wall.
No.
Hence why it retains heat so much.
Yes.
Really hot in there. Okay, so this is their proposal, four thousand eighteen dollars to move everything up to the second floor, and this is including all the patch wiring and everything else and the technical support to do it, correct?
Right.
Hardware. And we, we are using the shelf unit that's up in there?
Yes.
That's already existing up in that room, so we're saving money on that.
Good, I think this is a good idea.
And it will take one Friday to do it.
Okay.
And probably about, until about two o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. And just make sure that we organize with, um, you know, Travis and them.
Right.
So, do you have any questions, sir?
I'm, I'm in favor of the move, because it will prevent a lot of, um, bad stuff that could happen to the server. I do feel that it is a little high on price. A server is no more than a computer, uh, so to speak, but, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, but they're going to move all the wiring and run all the wiring up there, right?
I think that's the, the pain in the butt part, is all the wiring.
Yeah, but technically it's just moving a computer.
It's well beyond my skill level.
Yeah, I think because of all the wiring that comes from every single office in there, they have to move all of that upstairs.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Nope.
Do a motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Northeast IT to do, to move the server up into the cable room. Cable TV room.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Danny Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
So, for, for the funds on, on this, to pay for this, you're gonna pay for this through, through ARPA funds?
Oh, I thought we had the building account. I mean, either way, right?
Yeah, don't we have the building maintenance fund?
50,000 building maintenance account?
Well, I would have to see if that would qualify.
Well, it's general maintenance and-
It's upgrading.
What's that?
It's upgrading.
Yeah, I would have to see if that, if the, the article would allow for that.
See what, see which way and either way, if that works, let's use that. If not, we have to use ARPA.
All right.
It's 4,000.
All right.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, I guess just let us know.
I will let you know.
Yeah.
Okay, review and possible vote on electrical inspector fees increase. Okay, this is under seven.
This is going from Scott?
It is.
So he's, so he has the old ones and the new ones. The new ones were on the top, right?
Yes.
So he's going from the new single family dwelling with overhead service from 90 dollars to 150, then 120 to 200. And then per apartment meter socket is 150. Service upgrades to 200 amps, went from 45 to 100. Swimming pools from 70 to 150. In-ground and above-ground. Above-ground's 90. Okay. Does Scott on Zoom?
No.
No? Did he give us any, anything and why?
Just that it hasn't been done since, I think he said, 2015.
Yeah, at the bottom there, September 23rd.
So he just said that it was time to come up and he checked around to other towns.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, I was trying to check on 90 prices for Massachusetts electrical inspections.
Mr. Farrar, did you have anything on this?
No, I mean, it's up to the purview of the, of the Board of Selectmen, you know, they wanna review the fee schedule at any time.
Now, we haven't made any changes in seven, almost eight years?
Yeah.
He, he was actually matching towns around here.
Okay.
Okay. It doesn't seem like anything's out of reason. You know. I know a lot of our fees have been behind for a long time in a lot of things. We just raised a bunch of fees and the building department. For the building commissioner and, because they were so, so outdated.
Yeah.
Let us know when you're all set there.
No, I'm just double checking. And he, he is within below the average of, you know, compared to all the towns around here. Nothing, I think it's okay. Just, just to clarify, this is not money that he's getting, right? It's just, it's for the-
It's coming to the town.
Mm-hmm. So people don't think that he's gonna get erased.
No, it's coming to the town.
Yeah.
Hey. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the fee schedule proposed by the Inspector of Wires.
Electrical inspector.
Electrical inspector.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Danny Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously for the electrical inspector.
Come on now.
It was written right there.
Inspector of wires.
Specter, well, that's what it says on the top of the thing.
All right. So warrants and bills.
You ready for me?
Inspector bills.
Inspector gadget. All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number 35 payroll, 50,530 dollars and 38 cents. Number 36 vendor, 93,896 dollars and 13 cents. Number 37 payroll, 1,250 dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Danny Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Karen Dusty for reimbursement for postage and toolbox, 31 dollars and 14 cents. Reimbursement for the football program, 500 dollars. Myrick and O'Connell, 1,590 dollars. Ahern out of ARPA, 13,771 dollars and 50 cents. And Stryker out of ARPA, 1,971 dollars and 55 cents.
Second?
Hold on. So, first one with Karen-
It's divided up into two. Under streetlights and under selectmen. The toolbox is under selectmen, the streetlights is the postage.
Okay, because on here, it's only 120, 21, 24.
Let's see the 990 down below.
Okay.
Under streetlights.
Okay.
I have to do that so Tammy knows where to take it from.
Okay, right.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Danny Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right, minutes.
Make a motion to accept the October 13th, 2022 minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Danny Billy's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Then new business. Sign on Maple Street across from the railroad trussel. Gonna do a motion to Lily's Restoration, so that's the sign that's over there.
It's too small.
Well, there's not much room on that board, so that's gonna be fine.
Okay.
This is the gentleman that has just moved into town and has moved his business into the town. He has a C corporation. He's doing it, he's been doing it in a different town, he just moved to Warren.
Oh. Great.
Okay.
So we are approving that he's gonna put up the sign?
Yes.
He wants to put it on town property. So once you go onto the bridge-
Straight ahead.
And it's right ahead, you'll typically see like political signs put there or random other signs that are there. It kinda catches people's attention because they get a stop once they come onto that bridge and they see all those there. But, um, you know, my concern is, is we just don't want a lot of people just throwing up signs there now.
Yeah.
And putting random signs. They should be approved by us before any signs get put up in that space. I think there's two right now. I forget what they're even for.
Well, there's the yoga studio that's been there forever and Breslin that's on that sign. Those are the only two I could remember.
Yeah, there's at least two others.
Yeah, but I don't remember what they are.
Yeah. So I suggested to Karen to maybe put a notice up there that any signs going in this spot need to be approved by the selectmen.
Yeah.
Just so people, because I, I was afraid once that one went on, then other people would just throw signs up.
Yeah.
Because they're like, oh, look, oh, look, what a great idea, yeah.
Open up that door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if we, if we put that notice up there.
We can also put a notice on our website.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, were the signs, I, I know that when I saw the Breslin sign, it, you know, it has an arrow. So are those signs for the businesses down there, are they more for a, you know, directional sign than simply just advertising somebody's business?
Well, the yoga, I don't think has an arrow.
No.
No.
Center place yoga doesn't have an arrow.
I, I just, I wasn't sure, because usually you don't advertise private, you know, private businesses on public land.
Right. Oh.
I mean, I wasn't sure.
Because then, once you, because once you open up that door, you can't, you can't really say no to others. Because it's showing one business favoritism over somebody else. So if somebody else turns around and has a competitive business, I wanna put my sign right up next to him. Well, we already have a, you know, restoration sign there. Gotta put both.
Yeah.
We're gonna be fair. And that's why I was like, once we open up the door.
Well, could we do like a rotating thing? Like you get a month? So he could put his sign up for a month and then if somebody else wants to take that spot, they get a month? Open it up to-
But then you track and you get into, okay, whose sign's been there?
Well, do-
But I put my sign on the 21st and then he put it on the 31st. It's like, he got an extra two days.
If you did a calendar month, you know, I think it would, at least.
My thing, the problem also is, is you've already got those signs that have been there-
Yeah, I know.
Since, before I moved into town.
Right. They've been up there since like dinosaurs roamed.
And I'm not sure who gave them permission to put those signs up there all of a sudden there.
And that's maintained by the highway department. The other thing is, is the highway department has to clean around that area.
Yeah.
Well, that has to be on the board, it can't be in the ground.
Okay.
If there's room.
Because there's a couple of signs that are in the ground right there. That I've seen.
It's funny, drive by that all the time, but I can't think of really what time out there.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, so let me ask you this. When you come off the exit, we're in Palmer on 32, right? There's a board over here that's got a ton of businesses on it and then a board or an area straight ahead. That may be on private land, but the one here on the right is probably on Mass Turnpike land? So how is that? You, you would see that every day, right?
The, the one, you're coming right off the pike there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To the right, though. There's one to the right and there's one straight ahead of this.
The straight ahead one, that's all privately owned.
Yeah.
But the one-
To the right.
To the right.
There's a whole bunch of like smaller signs, like-
Oh, to the right there, yeah.
Well, the Mass Pike has their approved businesses that are on the pike. Like you, you can't-
That's private land.
There's only one gas station that runs throughout the pike. And they bid for that.
This is-
So those things are on there.
Like I know there's an insurance agent who has a sign on there. Like a local Palmer Insurance Company.
Derek has the picture of it.
I can't see it, but-
No, that's the one straight ahead.
That's in front, that's straight ahead.
But there's one to the right. It's kinda down in the gully.
It may be further back than your picture.
Yes, sir.
Most of those signs that you see in those different municipalities are usually owned by a chamber of commerce or something like that. It promotes the local businesses and stuff that may be part of that organization. I think the best thing would probably just to have town council review or something. If it's truly a town-owned sign or, or area in there, whether or not there should be any private businesses on that. I mean, but most of them, if it's, if it's under the purview of like a chamber of commerce or something, it's usually, you know, it's common practice to have businesses advertise on there. And I think that's what that one is in Palmer. I believe it actually says on the bottom, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce or something like that.
Okay.
Which is common for a municipality, I think that's on there somewhere. I don't know who, where that, the Warren original sign came from. I mean, that's been there well before I've been in town here and it's always been there. So that could be under the purview of a Chamber of Commerce, we did not even-
That would make sense to me.
That would kinda make sense.
Because everybody kept saying to me, do you guys do it? And I go, I don't think so.
I would be, I would, I, I wouldn't be surprised to, to find out that particular sign was for that exact purpose of a Chamber of Commerce or something at one point and that's why those-
Yeah, it does, it's the Quabod Hills Chamber.
Yeah. It's the air thing. You're right on that, there you go.
Do we have a Chamber of Commerce in town?
Quabod Hills. It's the same chamber, it's from-
Oh, it is?
It was probably- Belcher Town to Spencer along Route 9. So Belcher Town, Palmer, Ware, Warren.
Okay.
The Brookfields.
But it's us who manages that area?
We clean up around the sign.
Who owns the sign, though?
I don't know.
Maybe at one point the, the chamber came to the town and, and asked to have, you know, those, those signs put up there. Maybe it's, you know, that was a long time ago and, you know, it's, it's really, really unclear.
And I think we need more clarification from that. Because I don't wanna sit there and say yes to, to the one company and not, and, and we were telling other companies or whoever in the past, no, for whatever reason.
Okay.
You know. And we wanna be fair. If, if it's something that's, it's town business, local or whatever.
I wasn't sure if the signs up there, you know, were directional in nature, you know. I, I remember seeing the Breslin's one and the arrow, but if there's another one that doesn't have an arrow and wasn't direction in nature, then, then, you know, I don't know why they would have them there.
Yeah, let's hold off on it now.
Okay.
Do we want an opinion from town council just to see what?
Well, it'd be nice to know who even manages.
Manages it. Like Half Highway and Jeremy says, they mow around it, but they don't touch it.
Well, somebody put it up.
Yeah. So we have to find out who.
Yeah, if we find out if, you know, say, Quabod Chamber of Commerce put it up there for that purpose, maybe they have to go through them to put up the signs on there and get approval for the signs.
Okay, I'll figure it out. I'll work on it.
Thank you.
We'll table it.
Table it. All right.
Well, we did give them a free ad. Well, we did give them a free ad on the selectmen's meeting, right?
Yeah.
And the fives and tens of people that watch the meeting.
Well, you never know, right?
All right. So, old busi- well, do we have any other new business? Since we're speaking of it? No?
Nope.
No.
No?
I do not.
All right, moving on to old business. Check the sports teams for reimbursement. We need motions to write the checks to the soccer, football, cheer, baseball, the thousand dollar gift money. So.
So, it looks like for soccer, they're gonna be, they're gonna be on the agenda for next week and gonna come and do like a symbolic act of giving them the check. They're gonna, I think they're gonna bring a couple of kids with uniforms and everything and just sit down here and receive the check.
Okay. Very good. So, do we wanna do this now, or?
I just need to know, if we're going to do that, where we're giving the check to like soccer, I need to put it in so I can make sure that we have the check to give them. And so, I didn't know. How you wanted to do that, if you want to just present it to them, mail it to them? Have them give us receipts and send them after they spend the money.
I think it would be a good idea to invite them, like soccer's gonna do and be here, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's something important, you know, that.
All right. Then I think I'll do that all on the meeting in the first of November, if that's okay, that'll give me time to get everybody.
I, I think it, you know, very little, but it means so much for them, you know, especially for the kids in town. To be here, I remember many years ago, the club gave a plate with the picture of kids of one of the teams. And we were sitting there with the kids, give it to the board of select. So, it was a buy, I think, a bar, I think the, the idea was to say, thank you for the $500, soccer did that. And I think it was nice, the selectmen here, you know, they were very nice with the kids and it was like a five-minute thing and the kids were so happy. They, you know.
Okay.
So, which meeting was it? I don't see it in these minutes. Didn't we decide what we were gonna do with the money, like keep it in an account?
Well, we have it in a gift account right now from country. And then we decided.
For each group?
We divided it up to each group.
Well, we, we allocated it for each group, it's still in one account.
One account.
Except we took out the ones that already had it, gift fund. The senior center already has a gift fund account that they can use. The veterans already have a gift account that they can use. Park and Rec already has a gift account they can use. So, then I sent a memo to Tammy to transfer those into those three accounts. The soccer, football, and baseball doesn't have a gift account. And so, this is what I'm bringing to you, do we want to just write them the thousand dollar check and hand it to them? Or do we want to make them give us a bunch of receipts and then give them the check?
But what if, but if they get a check, what are they gonna do with it? Somebody's gonna put it in their personal bank account?
No, it ha- it goes into the bank account for the team.
Oh, they have their own bank here?
They do, each one of them does.
Every family, you know, every kid pays a fee to be on the club, so they, every, each.
Okay, so they, they run it like a.
They have their own account, they hit, they, they're very organized.
Yes, right. A nonprofit, yeah.
Just give them the money, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, let them use the money.
We don't need to micromanage it.
Well, that's what I was thinking, well, why give that headache to Tammy?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they have to give us bills for the 500.
You know, if there's a hundred thousand dollars or something like that, yeah.
Right.
Thousand dollars gifted to them.
Okay, so I'll get that done.
This is basically showing the support for the town to the sports in town.
All right.
All right. So, do a motion to put them in the gift account?
So, do we need a motion? I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to have, write the check.
Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion. To write checks to the soccer, football, cheer, and baseball each for the thousand dollar gift money.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Berry, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I also spent some time today downstairs looking at the equipment. I spoke with the soccer. Club, the president of the club, and he, he gave me the okay to pull stuff out and bring it to the shed in West Brookfield and Warren.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll have that done before the 31st, so the police can, or we can help the police do the move and all, and all that stuff.
Yep.
The trial court is coming on the 28th to move stuff around.
Okay.
All right.
Very good. All right. And appoint, well, next one is, well, any other old business besides that? No?
No.
Okay. All right, so, moving on, appoint.
The appointment for the Warren Housing Authority.
We have to rescind.
We have to rescind because I didn't advertise it. Because I totally forgot I was supposed to do that. So, we have to rescind that appointment and.
So, is he, he aware?
Yes, he is aware, everybody's aware of it.
Okay. So, let's do a motion to rescind it for the appointment of the housing authority. Because clerical, we need to advertise on it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to rescind the appointment of Mr. O'Keefe to the Warren Housing Authority.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Berry, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
So, can I ask a question about appointments? I kind of was under the impression that the person who wanted to be on the board, whatever board it is, would go to that board first. And talk to them, and then if it's a fit, that board would say, yes, we'd like to have this person on? Is that?
That is, that's supposed to be, but it needs to be advertised on our website, in the newspaper and.
Right, to give our people opportunity, yeah.
To give people opportunities.
Somebody else wants to do it.
That's not what happened in this case.
Yes, I, yeah, I understand, but still, I think the, the person wanting the position and the board are supposed to get together and.
Correct.
You know, is it a good fit, I guess?
And that's kind of what they did without advertising it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the problem will be the opposite. Let's say I'm, I'm against the board, but I wanna be in that position so I can, you know.
Well, ultimately, it's up to us.
Yeah, but if we don't know that there's not a fit.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's, yeah.
Then, then it will be trouble.
So, ideally, we'd get a, like a letter of recommendation from the Warren Housing Authority saying, hey, we'd like Bob O'Keefe, we'd like you to appoint him, or maybe they say no.
Well, yeah, he had several letters of recommendation, but there again, they, I didn't advertise it, but neither did they. And that's why several of the people from the housing authority, the people that live there came to me and said. Did you do this and we didn't hear about it? What's going on? And I said, no, I totally forgot, I was supposed to do that.
So, we'll fix it.
So, so somebody's posting it so that this November 1st deadline.
I've already got it in the newspaper.
Okay, all right.
And then I just said the letters of interest needed to be, so that we can vote on it on the 3rd.
Okay.
So, and then I sent that over to the housing authority, asking them to make sure they post it in their comment area.
Okay, good. And then this is the time for people to comment yea or nay on any candidates?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, before we go on to Mr. Farrar. Travis, do we need to take a five-minute break for you to do your video switch? Okay. So, we're gonna take a five-minute break to allow WCAT 12 to do a transfer of their video. To a new tape. We only have two hours per tape. They gotta upgrade that, so. I know that's on one of his things. It's been about five minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna continue on. And we have the town administrator report now with Mr. Farrar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things that transpired since our last meeting. This week, Warren Pumps celebrated their 125th anniversary. Had the opportunity to attend with some members of the Board of Selectmen. Really interesting, you know, what goes on down there. The economic development, what drives that, that company is the workers and the workers that are local. I think that's really one of the main reasons why that company has been there for so long. Is because of the support and the skilled labor that is in this area that supports that business. And it was really nice and it was really an interesting history on the, on the company and what they're looking to do to try to expand. I was there with this interim superintendent, Maureen Beninda. She was trying to encourage maybe have a discussion of some type of partnership program with, with the pump shop. To have some educational components towards the students at Quabog. Which is, which would be really helpful, I think, to them to secure that, the newer generation of, of, of workers. And that can staff that plant, so. There was a discussion that was had offline about that. You know, they're a very important business in our community. And it was really a nice celebration of all their history that they've had throughout the years in, in Warren. So, that was really nice of them and to recognize their valued employees. They also had employees that were retired, you know, recent retirees, people that have been retired 10 or 15 years. You know, they came back for the celebration. So, it was a testament to the company and how they value their employees. And, and it was really nice to hear from some of the retirees and, and the current workers over there. And, you know, you'd hear some of the names, you know, and some of the names were very familiar to names in this building. So, I would, you know, I would go up to that person, oh, you related to this? Oh, yeah, she's my cousin. So, it's all local for, for that company and they have a skilled force and, and they value the employees that, that, that are at that company. So, a testament to them, a testament to their company, their philosophy, and I hope that they're there for another 125 years plus, so. It was really good shot in the arm, they had, the congressman was there, Congressman Neal, State Representative Smola, State Senator Goby, State Representative Jake Oliveri. They were all there in supporting of it, so it was really good for the community and so I was really impressed with the turnout, too. It was a big turnout, big turnout for the employees. Getting back to some of the financial matters that we talked about last week. I worked this week with Highway Superintendent Jeremy Olson to secure a vehicle, an F-550. They're very tough to come by. I thought that there was a potential to having to issue an RFP or a invitation for bid. However, we were able to find one, secure one at Colonial Municipal. We were able to go under the Plymouth County contract, which the Warren DPW is a member of, so we can buy directly right from that contract. And we were able to secure this, the state pricing. So, it, it did save the town some money than, than what we anticipated that we would have to spend. So, we're going to be working on securing that, procuring that. This next week, it's reserved, we have a signature here and we're gonna be submitting that to have that body put on the truck. And it will be under the estimate that we had provided at the last meeting of the 100,000 that you gave them. You gave them 100,000 allocated for the project, we're gonna be coming in less than that, so. We're monitoring that and making sure that it's less than that and you'll have some more additional ARPA funds, ones that all invoices out to that truck.
There you go.
So, there was that. Also, this week, it was, it was brought to my attention in, in retrospect to the server project. And to help our, our friends upstairs, WCCT. They are looking, their, their, their air conditioner has, has ceased to operate. It's, it's an older air conditioner, maybe you've seen its, its life expectancy. They do use it quite a bit and I'm, I'm anticipating them even using it even more with more equipment up there when it gets a little bit hotter in there. So, they, I had Travis, I asked Travis to, you know, see if he can get me some quotes to what exactly he wanted. The BTUs and, and he quoted three different companies. And he did find one, same BTU as what he currently has in Ware for $4.99, $500. I think it's, it's relatively a very good price, it's installed. And they can do that, and I think. And they can do that, and I think that we could, you know, easily take care of that in our, you know, in our Shepherd, you know, building maintenance account.
Would it be worth waiting until the spring to do that? Just, I mean, if something goes wrong with it, we're not gonna know. You know, if it's put in now, it's not gonna be used for six months.
They still want it anyways because they gotta keep it cool in there.
They run it anyway?
As of, as of, you know, I, that was one of the questions that I did ask.
Yeah.
And he does use it, you know.
Really?
Yeah.
It gets really hot in there.
I think.
Here it comes now. They heard ya. How you doing, sir?
I figured I'd answer that question. So, yeah.
Please identify yourself, sir.
So Travis Baker, I run WCAT.
Yes.
Cable room upstairs.
Cable guy.
Um, yeah, cable guy. So, yeah, I know it's an odd time of year to be like, oh, we need an AC. But as we know, New England weather never makes sense. And we get 30 degrees one day and then 50, 60 the next. With our equipment alone, today was, I think, in the 50s or less today, and it's 73 up there right now. But, you know, so we have it set so that it keeps the room at like 70. So it does kick on here and there in the winter just to keep
Okay.
the room from warming up too much. And with all the other server equipment going upstairs, I gotta imagine that's gonna add even more heat building up. At least the heat doesn't get gone much there. I got the windows open right now, so.
I think it's one of those, it's better to get it done now than to wait till the summer. We now have air conditioners and trying to go through.
The other thing I was gonna bring up is most of the places, the places I called were, you know, well, they're on sale right now because
Yeah.
they're trying to get rid of inventory for
Yeah.
the newer stuff that comes out next year. So kinda kinda works out in our favor.
Okay, so circling back to the server room, is that locker thing gonna have a fan in it or something?
Yes.
Okay.
So so if we could, you know, if we could allow them to use this, I think that, you know, they've been very helpful with our server project, obviously, you know, working in conjunction with them. So I think it would be relatively a small ask of us to see if we could cover that cost for them under the Shepherd supply account.
Sure.
You need a motion to vote?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to purchase a
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh.
Nope.
No questions asked yet. I'm all in favor for the the thing controlling the humidity and the temperature. This is such an asset. Don't we think that should look at like a split system or something a little bit more formal than just a unit? Are you okay with that? Is that the best or?
You know, if you, I don't know how much mini split units cost or, you know, that that's well beyond anything I've ever had to purchase.
It would definitely be more than 500, though.
Yeah.
It will be more than 500, it will be more efficient.
Yeah.
Too, you know, and.
It could also do heat if they needed heat.
Yeah. Just a thought, you know. If it was just an office, I will, you know, say yes, but this is the server room and, you I don't wanna make it complicated. I'm okay like what you're proposing, but if you're if you're completely satisfied with what we are getting to you or we should, you know, this will be, you know, for all the building, I think this is the one, this space that deserves that.
I mean, right, the unit we have has been working. I I would say maybe get the unit for now and we can work on, you know, seeing what a, you know, mini split unit would cost and get some quotes from there on that. Because, I mean, worst case, you know, we we find, okay, we find a reasonably priced install for a mini split that would be, you know, better, they see it can get moved to another office when
Yeah.
So another
We use somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm sure eventually somebody's gonna need one.
Yeah, because the split system, yes, it will be like four times more the cost. It will save a lot of energy. It will be more stable, you know, but, you know.
Yeah, I I agree. I mean, with the with what, like I said, the the window unit cost, so to me it makes sense at least so we have something going for now and, you know, we can.
Because at some point, it is so cold outside that the condenser is not gonna work in very efficiently, make it it may froze at some point.
Right.
So.
On an air condition, on a regular window.
On a regular window air conditioner, when it's so cold outside, it's it's gonna freeze and it's gonna not, it's no good. You know, that's why you say when you have an air conditioner, you wanna store it in the winter.
But I think if it gets that cold out, we're not gonna be using it anyways.
Yeah, I mean, usually, so like last winter, you know, when I I watch the weather constantly because of my full-time job. So, you know, if I see if it's gonna be a week long, you know, 20 degrees, I usually shut it off. But if, you know, I see during the weather, they're going up, yep, you know, 20, 30 degrees, and then, oh, this day's gonna be 50, then I'll, you know, when I swing by, I usually throw it on just in case it gets warm in there.
I like your approach. Let's get this now because it 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 goes, it helps you with the what you're doing. But then we as a board, you know, should be really thinking about it, oh, that place deserves
Long-term.
deserves a split unit. And they would, that one, we can move someone else.
The other question is, so this is an easy case right now in October. What happens in July and August when it's 95 out? Does that AC really?
That AC's been been work and it's, you know, quite a few years old. It's been working out well. I mean, you know, a couple really, really bad days we had in the summer. It was warm up there, but it wasn't, you know, terrible.
Okay.
We we were fine sitting up there. You just, you know, it's a little warm up here.
But in in the long term, cranking it up in the summer will pay for the split system.
Right, because it's gonna be really expensive in the summer. It'll have to run all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is a, it is, you know, a decent size for my, I think when I
Yeah.
use the little app on the iPhone to measure it's like 24 by 30 with 10-foot ceilings.
Yeah, that's a lot.
So it's a, you know, pretty good-sized area.
Yeah.
I I just suggested for that we get what he's been, what they've been working on it.
Yeah.
But let's look ahead, you know, and think about it because, you know, now that we're spending the money to move the server, it's them, that place deserves a, you know, something better than a window unit.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. In the meantime, we'll do the AC?
Yes, and I'll get another chocolate.
All right, work on those chocolates.
I think I need a second.
Second.
A chocolate?
A second chocolate.
Okay.
Second.
So a second on the AC?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you have your second on the AC. Okay, all in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Get the AC.
Thank you. We're on that upstairs now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that will definitely help them upstairs, and I think they're very appreciative of that as well. Just to go recapping, the finance committee met this week. Their question obviously was, you know, what time did we anticipate meeting with legal counsel? I will tell them, we'll signal to them, it's gonna be an hour prior to the meeting. They had also okayed the the budget calendar as well. And there was no other, there was no other discussion as of that, as of that, as of right now. We do have the move coming in towards the end of the month with the trial court. We are also, will have all of the responses back on October 31st from the RFP. So we will be in contact with the review committee that was established.
Very good.
Shortly, you know, around that time period. And there's, you know, if we get indication that there's, you know, that there's responses coming, you know, we may have to schedule a site visit because that was what was called for the RFP, a preliminary site visit. I think it was the middle of next week, but we have not heard any responses back yet. So once we hear something back, then I'll, we'll definitely be in contact.
Anything else, sir?
No.
That'll be it. Any questions?
No.
Any questions, sir?
No, sir.
All right, so moving on. So comments and concerns? Do you have any comments or concerns?
Well, I'll just, Jim stole the thunder on Warren pumps.
Sorry.
We did, I did go on a tour. Derek went on half the tour of the plant. Very interesting things that they do with pumps, pretty fascinating, some big machines that work on these pumps. And then the other thing is, I, actually, Jim and I went to the spaghetti dinner. I don't know if you guys went?
No.
On Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, yeah. Yeah, so it looked like it was very well attended. I had driven by a little after 3:00, and there were already people sitting down eating when I drove by, which was kind of amazing, so.
So next time, you're gonna be there a little bit later so you can get the tickets and buy, I want some stuff
Ah.
at the raffle.
Oh.
Yeah.
Which ones?
Oh, there's, if you drive by my house and you see this big inflatable, like, looks like a punking head is trying to
Oh.
Very nice.
Very good.
Of course, I put all my tickets in there. Everybody was going to the the grill. There was a big grill donated by Home Depot over there.
Very good.
You can have a picture over here, but it was a wonderful event, spaghetti, all. Can I get the, who, where's that dressing for the salad? I really wanna know which one is that.
Yeah, they, that was, I'd have to check with them. I wanna say that this, the dressing was donated by the Public House. I think that's where it came from.
Yeah, they ain't telling you that recipe.
Yeah, I'd have to check, I'd have to check. We had quite a few places step up and do some donations for us this year. But I believe that, I believe that's where it came from.
Oh, jeez, that's cool.
Nice.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a good, we had a good turnout, a couple hundred people. Weren't quite sure how it would go, just people had been absent for a couple of years because of COVID, but people came out, they had a great time. We had probably 15, 20 raffle items that all went. Even the winner of the 50/50 raffle that, you know, they could've walked away with a couple hundred dollars in cash, they donated it right back to the fire association. They didn't even wanna take it, so they, you know, so we had some really nice things. I think they they made, you know, just about just under $5,000 worth of it, so it went really good. They're already looking at helping us with purchasing some equipment. We're, we just went out for a grant. We're actually submitting it tomorrow for, because of our population, you know, we're just under where we need to be to get the piece of equipment we're looking for. And the association has already agreed to step up and donate $2,000 to $3,000 towards the project so that it can be purchased if we get the grant. So that's kinda what they do. They 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 give back for things that we can't afford outside of our budget. And, you know, they've bought, you know, some, they just bought a small boat recently. They bought the Kubota RTV that you see, the the like side-by-side unit that we have. All that was purchased in the past by the association. So they do a lot of good things and do a lot of scholarship donations and everything, so.
Very good.
Works out well.
Good job. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Did you have anything?
Yes, just recapping about the restaurant liquor license. Does that apply to the Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3, too? Are there any restrictions on those? I had some business ask me, and they say, well, we, there's a cap and we can't, you know.
Those are autos.
Yeah, that depends upon where they are.
Where they are?
Mm-hmm, where they're located in town. There is caps in certain areas. There's somebody that comes every year, wants us to raise our cap, and because of where they're located, we cannot.
So I think we zoned, we limited the zoning on junkyards and auction, auto auction. So I think there's only one junkyard that can be permitted now because it's grandfathered, and I think that's it. And no more auto auction places.
Nope. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
No, I have no comments or concerns. Outstanding job, chief. You guys did a great job.
Thank you very much. I hope they did a great job.
The ambulance is awesome.
Yep, yep, it's coming. We're working our way through some stuff. You know, we did, we've done a lot of training on the new system. I mean, the new system, you know, for anybody that, you know, I wanted, my intention was to display it a little bit, but I was also afraid of taking up space in the parking lot, not being able to have people come in and out. But, you know, the stretcher system is state-of-the-art, you know, it's all battery-powered, it's everything right up, you know, and then we have the Lucas machine coming. So there's some really neat pieces of equipment in there. So so hoping to get some some good use out of that of that vehicle, so, yep, that's
It's very impressive when you stand in front of it.
Yeah, it's, you know, the
It's gigantic.
Well, it's, you know, most of the municipal ambulances are, yeah. Most of the municipal ambulances are going that way to the to the 550 chassis or the 5500 chassis, depending on whatever brand you you buy. But what what's happening is that the 911 trucks, they are just coming in so heavy with the boxes on the back and with the power load systems in the back that the 450s just can't, you know, they can't support the weight. And that's what we saw with our last truck. It was a, it was a Chevy 4500, and it was an okay truck. We got our, you know, we got our seven years out of it, but it was chewing through tires left and right because it was just so heavy. And, you know, you gotta be careful about that. Most people are getting away from those, and they're going right to the high-end 5500 series chassis to, just to support, you know, all the equipment that we're required to carry on the truck. So that's a very common thing. Almost every department around us has gone to those bigger, bigger size at this point, you know, especially for 911 scenarios.
And also, remember that the spaghetti, Officer Maureen, can we remember his last name? He approached me and he's, Derek, Derek, I wanted to show you something. And he showed me one of the new patrols.
Yeah, we saw that, too.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
We just picked it up. Myself and Chief Allett went out to Marlboro to to pick that up, I think, just the day before. So gave him a ride out there, and they did a nice job on it. So and then he's got the two others that are unmarked that are coming in the in the near future. But they did a nice job. That one's got a half, a half cage in it, so it's, you know, it's only one side prisoner and the other side is for the officer's use. So it's a little unique, but, you know, but it's a, it's a nice vehicle, came up really well.
Very good. Definitely getting some nice equipment in town. All right. So anybody from the public have any comments or concerns? Anybody from Zumbro?
No, it's Crickets.
Crickets. All right. So correspondence. We got Igor Korpex's letter of resignation from the Warren Cable Advisory Committee. I just wanna say thank you very much for his years of of service here and with the WCAT-12. He was the chairman for the board for a very long time, and he's done a lot for the cable. We really appreciate everything he's done. So we're gonna do a motion to accept his resignation. Does he have anything to say, Igor?
No, I just, thank you for your service, Igor.
Wonderful person, incredible.
Very good.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Igor Cup, I don't know, how do you say that? Cup.
Cup. Cupcake? I don't know, I can say Mr. Spanish if you want.
From the Warren Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and thank you very much for all your service, Igor. Enjoy your retirement.
Yeah.
All right. So rat notice vacancy? Is that what that is?
W-R-T-A. Oh, it's not
That's his email, right?
You put down rat.
W-Rat.
Oh, sorry.
I'm like, what's a rat?
W-R-T-A.
Okay, so W-R-T-A notice of vacancy, and that is on number 17 here. So we got a position that's out there? Is that what they're posting for?
Yes. And I'll post these on on our website.
So we'll post this on our website, so if anybody's interested in doing it. And they have
Well, they have to be part of a disabled population, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Disabled commuter population.
So they're looking for a representative to fill that vacancy on that board. They send it out to all community And they send it out to all communities to spread the word, to see if there's anybody interested.
So if they're mobily impaired, have a family member who's mobily impaired or caretaker or a person who's mobily impaired or work for an organization, organization that serves the need of the physically disabled.
It's a one-year term commitment to voting position. Attendance to monthly W R I T A board meetings. It's a third Thursday of every month at 8:30 a.m. By attendance, Zoom webinar, or when appropriate, at WIT hub, 60 Foster Street, Worcester. Okay? So the information will be up on the website. So if you're interested in doing it and you meet the requirements, good opportunity for some people. Do we have anything else on?
Yeah, just a small comment?
Yep.
Thank you. I don't know if it was you caring about this, all these tabs
Yep.
idea. I just got scared of the 650 and I'm looking, okay. But it's great.
Just in case.
I go back and forth very quickly finding stuff.
That's good. I'm glad.
It's much easier to use.
I'm glad.
Thank you very much.
But Richard, I decided that if we ever have 50, both of us are going to call in sick.
And are able to attend that meeting, unfortunately.
Well, that's when we have like five pages of stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so next meeting date?
Will be next, the 27th.
So we're on for October 27th is our next meeting date. And that is going to be at 6:00 p.m. here at the Shepherd Building. And then...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.